All right, then, at 10:04, I will open the August 22 Select Board Meeting. And first item on our agenda is public comment. And we have Ms. Williams. Did you want to make a comment this morning, Jan?
Sure, I just like to say good morning and I'm actually interested in seeing the MS1.
Okay, all right, thank you. Very good. And let's see, in the room, Ms. Brown, do you have a public comment for us?
I did, I wanted to ask if the preliminary results of the MS1 will be available for residents to review prior to your signing it?
I'm not sure.
Well, there's copyright there.
There is, yeah, we have a copy right here for you to look at and review. It's due by September 1st, this is our last meeting. So I can't guarantee that we're going to get together again. If it looks like it meets what we think it should be, we will probably sign it.
Okay, and then the follow-on question, typically you do release an old versus new valuations. Is that going to be available anytime soon?
I think there is a cover letter from our assessor that has...
Yeah, that's not what he's talking about.
Oh.
An old to new is each property gets listed out, what it was now, what it will be now. When that's ready, yes, it will come out.
Okay, but that will...
It will be public.
Right, of course it will be public, but yes, but not...
We just have to do the bridge and we have to do some of the other stuff in vision before.
All right. And I guess the last question I ask is if there are discrepancies and all, is what's the process for correcting that? Or once the MS1 is signed, is that it?
My experience is that there are always some avenues to correct errors. I'm not familiar with exactly how it would happen.
Okay.
If there was an error big enough to make a difference, that would certainly be addressed with a DRA.
Okay.
Thank you.
Not 100% satisfactory response, but it's the best we can give you.
Hi.
Thank you.
And, oh, you're waiting for your appointed time? To have a public comment before such time?
No, no, but I can, I mean, if it's convenient to do it now, I can do it now.
Okay, well, we will see if we have anyone else who has a public comment. We have our police chief here who's...
No public.
Waiting for later, making sure we... Okay, then, we can go to Ms. Brown. And you're representing the Utility Club, you have the floor.
So I, yes, I'm Lynn Brown and I'm the co-president with Lynn Parshall of the Utility Club this year. And for the past several years, you know, we have wished to give a tree or two trees or three trees, I think we're, we have a fair amount of money now, to put on the common because trees have come down. And so I guess I'm looking for an annual update. Dina said there's this committee or something working on the grand plan for the common. So we, I guess we'd like to know what's the plan and what timeline can we expect? And do you think that people would like to have trees planted? And we're not, I mean, we appreciate that maybe they don't, they won't be beautiful sugar maples, but there might be trees that survive better on the green. And we're not wedded to any particular tree, we just think that getting trees started would be a good thing.
We agree with you. We initially, we did have a lime common committee who looked, met for over a year, looked at a lot of different alternatives for the common. COVID disrupted that as it did everything in the United States and the world. And we put a hold on replanting trees because there was very serious discussion about undergrounding the power. And we didn't want to plant trees till we knew whether or not we were going to do that. I believe several months ago, if not more than that, we heard that that idea, the main driver for that was no longer interested in undergrounding the power. It's a huge undertaking as well as very expensive. And in fact, on my to-do list has been to bring up with the board, let's look at the plans, let's remind ourselves of the discussions that were held and let's get a plan in place and start working on it. Until we, and the Select Board, it is responsible for the common and what happens there. So until we have something concrete, we don't want to just piecemeal stuff in there. We certainly don't want to plant a tree and then have to move it. So, but we welcome the donation and the energy and the efforts to have some more trees planted in there.
And so do you have a timeline as to when we should come back and say we have this line?
My personal timeline was several years ago.
Okay.
So I don't have one at this, at this time. I would love to see it happen in the next year or two.
We should look at getting a professional landscape for the whole green and approach to either removing trees and replanting or having some, something that made sense.
Well, you have a lot of discussion you've had about parking and about a fence and about all kinds of things, so.
And a gazebo and planting, so yeah, I think.
But it should be done from that approach where everybody could have some input on a plan and then go move forward rather than, as you said, piecemeal, doesn't do it.
It's, it's time, it's past.
The Utility Club maybe would love a seat on that, on that committee.
Because I think everybody should have input on that.
Yeah, but don't forget us.
But it should, it should be a professional plan that really takes everything into account.
And my question was going to be, who's going to work on that? How, how can we make this go forward? I know Judy, you'd like to do it, but it, you know, but it comes down to, you know, somebody has to get appointed and, you know, who? Do you have a notion of who that might be or is that something you'd want to consider further?
I think the board needs to be the decider of what happens.
Sure.
Taking Ben's suggestion, we need to look at a couple of landscapers and perhaps hire one and go from there. These?
I don't know why we couldn't put a request for proposals on what could be done.
See, I can write an RFP.
Yeah.
And you can approve that and send it out and just see.
I'm thinking arborist needs to be involved, not just a landscaper.
Well, everybody that would be involved in putting in trees and, you know, maples were a terrible idea because salt kills maples, unfortunately.
Well, salt kills most things. But yeah.
There are trees that are more tolerant to salt.
Yeah, I, I think...
Oh, it kills us too.
Yeah. I think that our...
Why are we listening to somebody go really fast on the interstate?
Well, I don't think it has to be on speakerphone in order to hear, but we can hear the traffic, so I don't know what to say.
Is that traffic or is he snoring?
It's David's, it's traffic, I believe, and static.
Okay, so, uh, maybe you should let him know.
Hang on, let me see if I can...
Better, thank you.
That's good. Okay, now we probably won't be able to hear him.
Well, if he wants to say something, he can email Jordan and say, "Help."
Well, David, we hope you enjoy listening to us and... Yeah, I appreciate the effort.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I think you should pay attention to your driving and, but it's up to you. Okay, well, all right, thank you. I like Ben's idea. Dina, do you think between now and our next meeting, you could have an RFP for us to, draft for us to look at and hopefully approve? And let's get going.
I sure can.
Okay. It's for a plan to address the lime common area with probably a gazebo and some fencing and some new plantings and spiff it up and formalize it and work on it. Okay, great.
It may, it may require removing some trees in order to make it a uniform new setup.
Okay.
As split has taken down a lot of the branches, they won't have a lot left to do.
Yeah, it's always hard when electricity, beautiful trees, they sometimes don't play well together.
That's true, thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you. And we thank the Utility Club and others I know that are interested and have worked in the past on this project. Moving from there, we have minutes from August 8th. Thank you, I will second them, all those in favor say aye. And Judy, aye. And they are approved. Then we have three manifests. We have one manifest of $29,517.64, a second manifest for $40,762, I said that wrong, and the third manifest of $1,115.30. Thank you, Ben. And I will second them, all those in favor say aye.
Ben, aye.
And Judy, aye, okay. Going off...
And Judy, I want to thank you for putting the number in the, in the agenda so that I don't have to ask you for it.
I'll be honest, it's only there because I got done in time. That's usually why it's not there. Because, you know, we got to send it out and send out the agenda and...
Not on the agenda, but coming up next, we have received a list of unregistered dogs. And then it is somewhere, somewhere, I want to be very low, in our packet. And we need to approve that list so that we can send Sean out to, here it is. And there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13. I think I will move that, I don't really know why we need to approve this, but we approved the list that came from the town clerk.
Well, I think it's like a warrant.
Is that her actual warrant?
She's giving...
This is just a list.
No, it's not the warrant, it's just a list.
She's going to give, she's going to do the warrant after the list, yes.
But that's what you're voting on. You're having her issue a warrant to Sean.
Okay. I thought it was odd to move a list. Okay, sorry, David, thank you. Bye-bye. Thank you, Dina.
See, you didn't know it, you just volunteered for everything.
Put them on the list.
I'm just going to say, well, you were right there at the meeting, David, you just didn't hear. It's your call.
I will move approving the warrant for the list of unregistered dogs.
I'll second.
Okay, and all those in favor say aye.
Ben, aye.
And Judy, aye, okay, dogs approved. And next, not on here, but some housekeeping. We have an ever-so-slightly revised settlement agreement with PSNH and Evers, DBA doing business as Eversports. It has been looked at by town council and David Con and the changes have been approved. So we would like to pass that to Ben for a signature. We need a signature on the last time we appointed John Biglow as an alternate member of the Conservation Mission.
Yeah, you've already voted that too.
You voted that. And this is the, this is the three...
Manifests.
Manifests. Okay.
Glad you are.
Did that, did that. And then, I need to confirm a date for the presentation of the Boston Post. Last time we did... Oh, isn't that beautiful? Can I say who we did?
Yes, it's already been in the newspaper. The Journal opinion picked it up from our, from our meeting, so.
Roger Jenks, I, I will be like someone who told this stuff for everyone to see. It's a beautiful certificate. And what we do, the real Boston Post cane is on display in the case out in the hall here and we have a replica of it that goes to each individual.
Interesting.
They get a plaque now.
And Judy?
They don't even get a cane anymore?
There isn't anymore, that's my understanding. But I think we should have some...
Say again the name of the person?
Roger Jenks.
Roger Jenks, Roger C. Jenks, who is 96 years young. I'm not going to sign this right now.
Yep.
My hands are shaking a bit today.
Okay. So you need to pick a day. Or decide if all three of you are going to go or just one of you or...
Where is Mr. Jenks? Is he living there?
He lives right on Route 10.
So he's home?
Yeah.
We could go maybe after our next meeting, which is the 5th of September.
So I'll find out if that works.
Maybe 11:30ish, would that work for you?
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, if I don't put this in here now, it will be lost to memory. All right. We have an update on community power. Just a reminder that it is next Thursday at 7:00 in the community room at the Lime School, it's also known as the gym. And we will be given some information and it looks like it's right around the corner from being available for folks. So, anyone listening, next Thursday, August 29th at 7:00 PM at the Lime School Community Room.
Right, and that original October takeoff date is still good to go.
It's still good to go?
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay. Then, Community Care of Lime, Use, Common Use Application. They have applied for their Upper Valley Thrives Health and Wellness Fair. And we've had some sort of, sort of happens a lot with the use of the lime common. People fill out an application, takes us a little while to get all the details of what's going on, takes us a little while longer usually to know that everybody has insurance that's going to be there. And then, I think because of the month-long lead time before the event, as the days go by, more activities get planned or more groups coming, get added to it or other events happen. And in this particular case, we seem to have added, now I have too many pieces to take. Some 70 different vendors and...
They're coming in.
Are they coming in today?
To discuss the lease.
Well, yeah, so you want to hold this off till then?
Well, you can ask them questions when they come.
So the, the advertisement now is calling for 70 organizations across the Upper Valley. Information, resources, food, music, et cetera, which is great, we really like that. We just are struggling with the sort of additional last-minute items, which is not to say it is just CCL because we experience that with pretty much every event that occurs on the road. So...
It's frustrating.
It is frustrating. And so we will also be talking to, what time are they coming in? Oh, 10:45.
They're coming, 10:45.
Yep, okay, so I will add that to the 10:45 discussion.
So Judy, if I may, so the, is the concern, all these new people coming in may not have insur, is, is the town's concern about insurance or are there other, other considerations?
I think our biggest concern is insurance.
Yep.
If you have 70 vendors, you got presumably 70 cars plus people attending, where are they going to go?
Okay.
And parking plans often received, which I completely understand, is we will talk with Sean, the police chief, about what our plan is, but not to worry because we're sure we can find parking spaces. And it's a little loosey-goosey for a lot of limited parking up in the town.
Okay, thank you.
Those are our concerns, and, you know, who's coming? So, as I said, it's not limited to them, it's on our radar right now because that's happening. And there is a, an event this weekend as well, which is not CCL's, it's...
Lime Foundation.
Lime Foundation.
Well, of course, right.
Celebrate summer event. Okay. Then we can move to a really another fun thing. The Dartmouth Skiway, did you have a chance to read this, Ben?
No, I've read it a couple times.
A couple times, okay.
I'll read it again.
We have a dilemma here because the town has an agreement signed in 2002 with Dartmouth College. And it talks about how ambulance bills are going to be taken care of, lime student passes, assessing skiway trails, the lift and the lodge. This was about the time the new lodge was built. It has been how we have split the assessment for that property, the tax assessment, over the years. This last, this year, our assessor re-looked very carefully at what happens out there and the use of the lodge and the use of the trails and so on. And also with a new, New Hampshire Supreme Court decision, maybe a couple of years old, I'm not sure, but it, it talked about educational institutions and what part, exempt, what part of those institutions uses and services are not exempted. And recommended that he believed that we cannot grant the exemptions the way we had done in the past for the college. So that's our quandary, what do we do? We are now at the deadline to make a decision. My understanding is we have not made a decision on the skiway.
It seems like Laura said, "I'll do it next year."
It does seem like Laura did say that. The proviso being, she said, if someone really felt strongly about are not changing things this year, they have, that person has the opportunity to go to the Board of Tax and Land Appeals. Failing that, we have set up a meeting or are setting up a meeting for the fall with the college to discuss that court decision, how they use the skiway, how we view what we've done in the past and what we may need to do going forward. And I think the advice to wait till we've had that meeting and then look to next year's tax is very solid. And do we still have people on Zoom?
We have Jan and Jordan.
So Jan, did you want to comment on this?
No, I'm here for the MS1, Judy, not, not this issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that, I mean, that makes perfect sense.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
And I, I just want to make it clear that they do pay taxes. They, they pay close to $50,000 in taxes, so they're not 100% exempt.
Okay, no, that's true, they aren't.
I think that's an important fact. Point.
All right, so we will look for 2025 and our exciting conversation with the college.
So you need to move to approve this, the, the...
The...
Agreement exemption.
Approve the 2002 agreement.
Yeah, well, to stand by that and, right.
For this year.
Right.
For 2024.
2000, right, 2024 tax.
I will move that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ben. All those in favor, say aye.
Ben, aye.
Judy, aye. That's approved. So, okay, thank you. And then, do we have Todd on yet?
Um, nope, I asked Jordan to, um...
Okay.
Email him.
Okay.
And I suspect you have to deny this official tax exemption from pod for Dartmouth College trustees. So you should sign that too.
Well, boy, howdy.
Boy, howdy, it's her.
Hey, power.
So we are...
I'll text you.
We're denying the denial.
You're denying the denial, that's right.
It's much easier, I'm big in here, I don't have...
I won't tell you, I was just thinking the same things. Speedy, no, we love, I love that he always has lots of questions.
All right.
And Todd just joined us.
Okay, this is the conversation we've all been waiting for.
Right.
Thank you for joining us, Todd.
Hang on, hang on a sec, I'm not hearing you.
Yes.
We can't hear you very well, hang on. Is this not working?
Probably is, no.
Okay.
Can we help?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, yes, let's do the MS1.
What is going on? Hey, wait a minute, Todd, sorry, but something's going on. Say something now. It's not coming through this, that's the problem.
It's coming through your computer.
It's only on the computer, right. Could you say something now, Todd? Could you say something now, Todd, please?
That's one six two three?
Yeah.
That's better when you do that, yes. But it's still not coming through the app.
Where's Jordan?
She's on the thing.
All right.
Technology, I hate this.
This year as opposed to last year, your total assessed value increased by a little over one point seven million dollars. We lost a little bit of value in current use because the current use has to be equalized every year. And as your ratio goes down, so do the current use values. And then, of course, the exemptions that we granted increased as well. So that's, 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 that's it in a nutshell. I don't know that there's a whole or exciting things going on there. Do you have any questions?
Um, I do not.
Do not.
I gave you one.
It's right there, it's your copy.
That's for me?
Yeah.
Take it with you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have, I have no questions. I appreciate the time that went into doing a cover memo and then the detail of the summary evaluation. I will not be able to interpret it the way that you do or probably Mr. Brown will, but I'm feeling okay about it. And we'll let Ben have a look-see and then we'll see what we wish to do with that. And then we will move on to the next abatement request while you're still with us. Okay, thanks.
I move it. I looked at it the other night.
Okay. And I will second it?
And I.
And Judy, aye. So the MS one is approved and Deana can send it in. Mr. Brown and others that are concerned can let us know if they find some errors, not just disagreement, but errors and disagreement, you can let us know. And then we'll go from there. Okay. Thank you, Deana, thank you, Todd. Now, we have an abatement request from you for a property at seven eleven River Road.
You agreed to this and that's why it's taking so long because they just, they just agreed for the lots of big interior inspection and two of the bedrooms are in the basement, so I, that's a little unusual, but because of that. And also I noted that they didn't, they didn't really have a view, so I- that. So that's where, that's the reason for the change and the revised assessment would be one the current use value and that would be a net change of one hundred and thirty-six thousand.
So it's about three thousand four hundred and seventy dollars taxes reduced. Okay. Thank you.
Judy, could Todd say those numbers again? It was very hard to hear as they came.
I can, I can give you the numbers, or, yeah. And they'll be right in the minutes anyways, the draft minutes.
Okay, so I will move to approve this abatement request.
I'll second.
And, oh, and Judy, aye, Judy, Ben approved. Um, let's see.
Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you, Todd, I think that's all we may have for you at this point. Okay. Bye-bye, have a good day.
Thanks, Todd, bye.
Okay. Let's for something else.
There must be a shore inside because when Jan talked, it wasn't, you could hear her fine.
Yeah, right.
So there's something.
So did Jan raise her hand to say anything when we were talking about the MS one?
I didn't see it.
Because I wanna make sure.
Hang on, she's gonna ask. Go ahead, Jan.
Um, I, I wanna see it. I think some of us would like to look at the properties used to set the rates and that will happen.
Oh, well, that's not the MS one, so that's, that's the tax rate, to set the tax rate. They don't look at-
Oh, I'm not, no, sorry. But I do wanna see the properties that are included on the MS one.
Well, that's all of our properties.
Okay, thanks.
I'll send you a copy of it, I'm happy to.
Very good.
Would you like a copy?
She said yes.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, we've done that. We have a report of wood cut for seven seven two River Road.
Yep.
And this is Ben's review.
That's good.
Looks good. And that will be five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents. Would you like that? I will move the approval of this report and that change. Okay, Judy. Ben, all those in favor, say aye.
And aye.
And Judy, aye, that's approved. Okay, we did the MS one review. Done that and that, dogs aren't interested, this is non-public. Well, I would just share with anyone that's still interested that we have a slight report from our head lifeguard this year. And she thought the year went well, the guards liked the way the hours were set up. I think we will have most people coming back again, we have our fingers crossed. A recommendation to have a little more secure dock anchors, actually the float, the raft. It moved around a little bit, it needs a little tweaking. We're gonna get some new signs perhaps and it's a good little report. And in fact, we also, I think we said at the last meeting that our head lifeguard, I believe, got a, had a boy.
Yeah.
Pat on the back for rescuing a dog who was out in the pond and tiring. So she went out on the rescue board and helped him to-
So I hope the dog's family made a recommendation for him.
They gave me a, yes, it was a fabulous email that I got from them.
And I wanna say that it really warms the cockles of my heart to be able to see a head lifeguard report at all. And, and the fact that it was good is even better. So thank you.
You're welcome. Well, we, we thank-
You know how hard it was to even get a lifeguard.
I do know, and so thank you. I mean, I actually mean that sincerely, this is a good thing.
It's a great thing.
Finally things came together.
Yeah. It's-
It's good to have a good report out of the beach. My first year on the board, it was not a pleasant year.
Well, yeah, I, that's one of the things that gets me going is just don't need to have so much conflict down there.
Nope. Everybody should be jumping for joy and thankful that we have lifeguards.
Right. Don't lose the secret sauce, whatever you did.
And just to point out, there's still half the country that doesn't have them.
Right.
Yeah.
And the other thing I think is really important, every single lifeguard that we had down there is a Lime resident, is a young kid who grew up in Lime. Not that it has to be, you know, but-
And when it's good, it is.
But I think that our first year back, really having it, to have it be community kids, I think is just special.
And it's nice to know the resources there.
Yeah.
That, that, in fact, it could come from Lime.
And that's how it used to be, but, you know, times do change. I was interested, as a sort of an aside, to see somewhere that in that, no, fairly, Treasure Island, there was that big thunderstorm coming in and their head lifeguard blew the whistle and told everyone to get out of the water. And there was some discussions.
Pushback, yes.
Yes, pushback is the question.
Yes.
And, and that's the sort of thing that we occasionally have when we have lifeguards, but apparently not unique to Lime.
Good.
Okay, did that? We have, well, just a tidbit while we wait and see where people are coming, is getting ready for budget season. In July of this year compared to July of last year, the New England CPI, which includes New Hampshire, went up to three point five to three point nine. So that's not the number we will use because it will change over the next month or two, but-
We usually use this number.
Right. So it's around the corner, but just as we usually use that number for our raises and our budgeting purposes.
So just for clarification, we should have the number three point nine, something like three point nine in mind?
Yeah, we'll see, I mean, it has had, has been higher, it's usually around the three percent, something around three percent. Yeah, be looking somewhere unless things change dramatically. If you go grocery shopping, you know it's-
It's different. Right.
That number doesn't cut it, but. I am, I'm a-
I think she's here.
Okay.
I just saw her look across the parking lot, I believe.
Okay. Hi, come in.
Good morning.
Good morning. And you are here for the CCL lease discussion?
Yes, I am.
Okay, let's see, we proposed some wording changes to the lease going forward as well as an increase in the rent for the space, which my understanding is is the first time you increase the rent. Is that correct, Deana?
Yes.
Since the lease began?
Yes.
So. Yes.
No, nothing, I was just, I wanted to introduce myself because I am the new BD at CCL.
Okay.
And so I'm still also trying to figure it all out and what the lease was for versus what it is going forward. And to just ask basically the reasoning behind the changes and, yeah, just to get more information.
Okay. So some of the wording changes came from another lease that we have on the little house over here.
Oh, okay.
And it actually is wording that is in many, many tenant leases.
Okay.
And we felt it should be here.
Okay.
We felt raising the rent from, I believe it was four thousand six hundred annually
Yep.
to six thousand five hundred was a fair increase, given cost of living increases over the last many years.
Right.
And this is a year in advance, so this is what will be in place next year. If your board chooses to dispute that, that's fine, but we are confident that this is a proper lease and that was a proper increase.
Okay.
We do have a couple of concerns for you that you should take back to folks.
Yeah.
And one of those is that there seems to be sort of a spreading out of CCL's use of the building.
Okay.
The building is a town resource and we do schedule other things there. And we have asked, and I believe it's a part of the present lease and the lease going forward, that if CCL is going to use like the classroom, they wanna make sure that it's not scheduled for somebody else.
Okay.
Or if you're going to have, like you had your, was it an auction?
Yard sale.
Yard sale.
Yes.
That was never cleared with the board on selectmen. And when it was over, there was a lot of leftover goodies everywhere. And, you know, for instance, sometimes that building is used for memorial services or for weddings or other things. That would have been unfortunate if someone was coming in the next day and there was a lot of leftovers.
Okay, yes, I, I'm sorry, it was one of those things that we tried to deal with it the day of and yes, there were a few things that we had to deal with that weekend, but I apologize on behalf of everyone.
So.
Yeah. Would it be, I was just asking, would it be easier for us to just rent out the whole building? Like, would that be easier for-
Well, that would not be easier because the town uses it for many functions.
Okay, I wasn't sure what type of town besides the memorial service, what other town events are held there because I haven't attended them, but I, I'm new here also, so it's one of those things.
Well, it was originally refurbished
Yeah.
for the use of the community events.
Right.
You know, for whatever they wanted to, birthday, people do it for birthday parties or all kinds of different things, so.
Totally, yeah.
Renting it all out to one group wouldn't be-
No, but we're, we, yes, I completely understand. We're trying to turn it basically into a community space so that people are free to use it as they see it, so we-
No, that's, that's not your function.
Okay.
Your function, you are a separate entity, you're not a part of, of the governance of the town of Lime.
Totally, I understand that.
And so you are restricted to what you lease.
Okay.
And any other use needs approval. So
Okay.
Possibly CCL might look to relocate somewhere else if you think you don't have enough space or enough room.
Okay, it was, it was mainly just a question.
Yeah.
Because we, as I said, so you guys should come and check out the space, it's beautiful. Like, we've, we're turning our, our little living room into, and I would love to invite everyone to come by, to just see it and see the space because it's, it's a great little spot and we've spoken to a lot of community members and they're like, oh, this is such an amazing spot. It would be great to turn this like more into like having more gatherings here, we're hosting the, because I'm also the chair of the PTO, I don't know if you know, but we are hosting our meetings there. And it's just like a great little community center for it to be more uplifting for the community. And we just had a few people in the community saying how it would be a great space and to utilize that space more. And if they knew, this is wonderful, I had no idea that they are able to utilize a space like that because we've had a lot of feedback from the community members that we've spoken to saying that it is such a beautiful space. Right, the academy building is so beautiful, it's such a beautiful building, and it's a shame that it's just sitting there, that like people aren't really using it. And this is just a way for us to try to help you and like to facilitate it. It's not that we would own, it would just be just to facilitate more of the use of the building because it is such a beautiful building and I think people need to see it, it's beautiful. And you did a wonderful job with renovating it, so.
Well, and those renovations were mostly paid for by private donations.
Right, I know, it's amazing, it's amazing what they did.
It is a property that belongs to the town of Lime, it's an old school building.
Totally.
And Sean?
I was just looking for clarification, did you mean that the PTO is meeting there?
We're gonna be, we're gonna be holding for our, because I'm gonna be using the PTO, yeah, for the PTO space, for the just our- We're gonna be, we're gonna be holding for our, because I'm gonna be using the PTO, yeah, for the PTO space, for the, just our living room.
The CCL space.
CCL space, not, we're not going upstairs, it's just for the, the living room. Is that okay?
Okay. I, I don't know, I think that's a question for the board, because it seems to me that that is probably something that needs to be approved.
Okay.
I, I don't know that. It just seems to me that
The living room?
You're, you're spreading your wings into a building that's not yours.
Okay.
And that's
That's, that's my concern.
We're not gonna allow.
Okay, sounds good, I, I appreciate that. Um. Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, okay, so, different hat. How should I, um, approach? The, the, can I do that also? Because right now I'm talking about the lease. And then as a separate, as a separate thing, I'll talk about the, yeah.
Send an email.
I'll send an email to
Either Jordan or Deana.
Okay.
And they will get it to us with what you want to do, but
Sounds great.
I think that the current lease also limits the hours that CCL is supposed to be open. Um, eight to five. Oh, and that's, that's for the.
For the classroom.
That's for the classroom.
That's when they can use it if it's not.
If it's not being used, so.
And that's for the classroom that's adjacent to it?
Right, right, I see that.
Yes.
But we need to know.
Yeah. Yeah, we need to know any other use other than your space
Okay.
that we lease, which is pretty well, I think there is attached to the lease a diagram of the space.
Yes, and it's just the CCL office slash living room.
And the sitting room, right?
And the sitting room, yeah. Okay. Oh, I also had a, a quick, because there was a highlighted section here, the tenant shall not do or permit anything in the section six A.
Right, that's what we added.
Okay, that's what you added, okay, great. And that was because it was just new, um.
It's new to your lease.
New to our lease, because this is what we've been, you've been doing for other leases that you had, okay.
Right.
Great, that was just a clarification, awesome. And also for the acts, oh, section, what section is this? Section six F, access. The cleaning of
Yeah.
the space hasn't been super consistent, so person who comes and cleans doesn't come from six thirty to nine thirty, sometimes comes random times during the day. Um, wasn't sure, because we haven't had, we didn't need the use, because we've been cleaning our own space and taking out our own recycling and all of that, we haven't had to rely on anyone. Um. And I was just wondering if that was still a specific, specific time, because we haven't, we haven't seen them at that.
Yeah, I think that, um, just because of events out there too, you know, he has to clean at different times, and if he knows there's gonna be an event, he'll come on a different day to clean it.
So should we strike that?
Or if there's been an event, he has to come after.
Right.
Well, I think he likes the the ability to be able to go on Monday if it works out. And prior, it may not be a problem now, I don't know what hours they're open, but you know, it just seemed to coincide with.
What hours are you open?
When somebody was there.
On a regular basis?
On a regular basis, we're there from nine to like twelve on most days.
We can, we can change that from six to nine, or six thirty to nine. And just leave it.
We'll change that.
Okay, great. Actually, on Mondays, we're there a little early because we have to set up for our open hours. Um, we do a storytime at the, on Mondays now. So can we change it to eight thirty? Six thirty to eight thirty on Mondays?
Well, that's two hours as opposed to three hours, I'm not sure how well that would work.
If he's still cleaning, it'll be noisy, I guess.
And that's fine, it's fine with us if he's cleaning.
Do you do it every time that you have a story hour?
Yes.
So.
But the mon, story hour doesn't, isn't until nine thirty, so if he shows up and then we're still, it's, it's totally fine, it's just.
Is you're setting up?
It's just setting up, yeah, for it, it's totally fine.
Okay. Then we'll leave it at nine?
Yeah.
What else do we have? Did I forget?
Um, let me see if I have anything else.
I think I've listed almost your list. Okay. Um, oh, we had the for the helping owner's fee.
Yeah.
And your list.
Oh, the vendor list, are you going to get us a vendor list for the Upper Valley Thrives?
Upper Valley, yes, we are, our vendor, um, deadline is the end of this month. So we will, um, yes. Gosh, that's already next week. Yes, I know. Um, sorry, I'm just checking my calendar, yes, it is, so by, by the thirty-first, that's our deadline, so as, next Saturday.
And
Yeah.
you will have, um, the names of the vendors and proof of insurance and all of that good stuff.
Yes, theoretically, yes, we are, we are gonna, we're gonna have, um.
Not, not theoretically.
That is the goal, is basically what I'm saying. If we don't have it, then I guess we won't, um, accept any more vendors, but we are, our deadline is set for the thirty-first.
So if you already have some vendors and you have that information, could you forward what you have?
Oh, would love to, yeah.
We won't be meeting on the thirty-first.
Okay, yeah, um, here, just let me make a note of that.
Well, I think we should just make it clear that if Jordan doesn't have the insurance certificates and the vendors, then by the thirty-first or whatever date you guys want to say, because you're not gonna be needing it again, then she has the authority to tell them, sorry, those vendors can't attend.
So you want to get us what you have as soon as you can?
As soon, when is your next meeting?
In September, on the fifth, the fourth and the fifth. But that's too late.
Oh, that's too late?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Well, we have thirty day, they have thirty days, correct?
Yeah, but there are events on the twenty.
They should.
There are events on the twenty eighth.
No, I'm just saying, I, I know that, but, so it's not gonna, that meeting is too late.
Yeah.
That's why.
Ah, okay, the meeting is too late, okay. So by
If, if I may, um, what's the, what's the debt, um, I'm asking the chair here, what's the, uh, what are the deadlines?
Thirty days prior to the event. We need to have the application, the insurance, the list of vendors.
I see, so.
An approved parking plan, the whole thing needs to be more or less.
Okay. Good.
It needs to be set in stone, because this is what we're gonna do.
All right.
And, um.
Thank you, that's, I was, I just want to understand.
And it's the same for everyone.
For every, so for like, for example, the Lime Foundation event?
Yes.
Has it all been set in stone there before Saturday?
Um.
Well, I'm here to tell you that this is part of the problem.
Okay.
Is that every time.
Okay.
And I'm not just gonna point out CCL, because obviously there's other groups.
Right.
This is what happens.
Okay.
They don't deliver what they're supposed to. And they end up having this, right.
Scramble.
And in fact, some of what they very lately proposed, they're not going to be able to do because it's too late.
Oh. Oh, our event, or?
No.
Oh, no.
You asked about the.
Oh, okay, the Lime Foundation event.
Right, right.
Oh. Okay.
Because we don't, you know, we don't have the full vendor list, we don't have insurance certificates, we don't have stuff, so there's gonna be a problem.
Oh, and, yeah, okay.
Essentially gets the message out.
I will get the message, because I'm also on the planning committee, have you spoken to Alicia? And, um, for the Lime Foundation planning?
We don't need to get in the middle of that, we've spoken to who filled the.
Okay, application out, okay.
But I'll tell you, I'll be totally honest, it's been a struggle.
It's been a struggle, I.
For years now. When, when an event wants to be planned
I know.
or is trying to be planned, and Jordan has gone, Jordan's done this for two and a half years now.
I know, she's been lovely with everything that we've been doing.
She has tried and tried and tried to get the people that are planning the things to do what they need to by
By a certain.
a reasonable amount of time. There's always pushback, or there's always a problem, so it's very stressful for.
I know, it's, or, or there's last minute things that Last minute. and where like, I had no idea that was even a thing. Right.
I read it on the Lime list, and Jordan goes, Deana, did you know about this? I go, no, one thing.
Yeah.
You know, and we just have to protect the town.
Of course.
We have to make sure the insurance is appropriate and
Of course, and it's protecting because you're using your, yeah, no, I completely agree, I.
It's not that we don't like fun events.
No, I, I know. I know, but it's, it's all about protecting, that's why, like, because I've gone through this with Jordan with multiple events, with just PTO. Um, it's because like, that's why we put the Town of Lime on our insurance policy, so that we can submit it. Totally get it, um, that's why I was just asking, I'm like, I wear a lot of hats, so that's why I will get the word out.
That would be a good thing.
I am the chair of one of the, at least the other organization, the PTO, so we are gonna have it covered, so we're gonna have it submitted well before the deadlines, and that was just something that.
Yep. It's a good thing to do, and we're getting crankier.
Yeah, no, but I, I appreciate, like, again, I'm this, in this role, I am new, so it's, um, I appreciate the feedback, because I will, um, be more mindful of that going forward.
And be awesome.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Um, and thank you, thank you so much for educating me, I really appreciate it. It's something that I really do want to work with the Town of Lime, so that we could have such an amazing that we live, you know, that's why we're here, right? Okay, great, I think that's everything from mine. Um, yeah, so we covered the cleanings, weekly, okay. I think that's, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah. Perfect. And so it'll, and we, have we submitted a check? We have not submitted a check yet for this, for our lease.
The lease, I believe Deana said she got a check.
Oh, you did.
For the forty-six hundred.
Oh, okay.
Which is the regular thing, the regular lease, but
From our, from our.
I need to go back and, and, and double check to make sure that that wasn't for the last, right, because they were a little behind.
Behind.
A little behind.
Okay, we'll let you know.
Okay.
I'll, I'll double check.
We're usually pretty good at collecting money.
Okay, great, wonderful.
Okay.
Awesome, okay, I think that's it. So that is, that for
That's it.
CCL.
Yes.
Um, is it possible for me to talk just briefly about PTO? Or should I send an email first?
Send an email.
Send an email first, okay, perfect.
We actually have more.
You have more on your agenda, of course we do. How silly of me, I'm sorry. Okay, I appreciate the time.
We appreciate your time as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye. Bye, thank you, we have had a great day.
Okay, I think we're gonna go into non-public session now.
Okay. Very good.
And, um, nice to see you again, Ms. Williams, thanks.